Evening, everybody. It's March 11th. Welcome to the Blue Lake City Council meeting. City Manager Mager, can you go ahead and establish a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Sawatsky.
Here.
Mayor Protem Scaphoni.
Here.
Councilmember Fire.
Here.
Councilmember Napier.
Here.
Councilmember Louis Luso.
Here.
All right, moving on to agenda item number one, which is closed session. This is a public employee performance evaluation. I'm going to open up the floor for public comment. I prefer we keep comments professional, but I can't stop you from doing that. So go ahead and we'll open up the floor for public comment.
My name is Jason Cruz. I'm just here to show my support for City Manager. I have been in favor of the driving. We're hoping to. Bring your contract. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to state one other thing. We're going to go ahead and hold this to 15 minutes and let's try and keep it under 90 seconds. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Julie Perry, and we've been in Blue Lake almost seven years. And I met Mandy right away. She is really easily accessible, easy to talk with. She's got, we both plans for the community, and we just really wanted to show our support that we hope she continues as City Manager. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Lynn Shing, and I've lived in Blue Lake for a little over six years. And I just wanted to voice my support for Mandy tonight. I think it's more than just a job for her. She has a real passion for our town and the people in it. She's done a lot for our community, and I've heard employees that are under her.
Thank you very much. Next. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Maria Mahegan. I've lived in Blue Lake for about 10 and a half years. And I am voicing my support for Mandy, the City Manager. I'd like to see the contract renewed. I think it would be a pity to lose her. I think she's got great commitment and vision and expertise. She is easily accessible. I think she's done a lot of great things for the community already and very diligent, hardworking. I think if we get somebody from out of the area, they're not going to be interested in supporting our community quite the same way either. She has vested interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Elisa Rosato. Outside of Mandy's family, I probably know her better than anyone else in this world. And I got to tell you, I think she's freaking nuts. She's absolutely insane to want to do a job in which she gets disparaged and just taken down. But she's doing it because she loves this town. She loves the people in this town. We just had a movie the other day in Arcata talking about Blue Lake, promoting Blue Lake. You know who starred in that movie? Amanda Maker, talking about Blue Lake. She's promoting this town. I can't go rafting with her. It takes an hour and a half to go a mile because everyone's stopping and saying, you're doing such a fantastic job. Ignore Facebook. Ignore Facebook. You're doing great. So best City Manager we've ever had. It would be foolish to let somebody with the passion that she has for this town go.
Thank you. Next. Yes, go ahead.
My name is Linda Cooley, and I know everyone here has a bunch of people saying yea or nay. I'm just asking that whatever happens moving forward, that we can all work together because right now we don't. We never get invited to City anything. We don't know things. We don't have communication. We can't get responses. So whatever we do moving forward, we need to work better together. And there's other businesses to get left out too. And I think that we're stronger together. We all support whoever is in that position, but it goes both ways. We can't support anyone when we have no communication. And when we talk about spreading the good word of Blue Lake, everything should be spread in Blue Lake, not just a couple of things. And we need to get better at that. We're in a really hard economic time in the country. It's divided. We don't need to be divided here, and we are. There's one side that's called the haters, and the other side is called the happy people, and that's not even fair. I think that we all need to be together better and supportive, and that's not happening. And that's not just on this side, it's on that side too. So whatever happens going forward, I hope that we can figure that out because it's just not working right now for everyone. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next. Yes, go ahead.
I'm Erin McClure, and I'm sure everybody knows where I stand, so I'm not going to go on and on. But what I am going to say is when you get somebody, I worked for a large corporation, and the thing that they taught all the time was when you have somebody in a position in your company that causes a lot of drama, no matter what it looks like they're doing as far as positive for the company, you do not keep them because you will never get rid of that drama. So there's a ton of drama in this town. I think all the rest of the towns are taking a look at our town and kind of laughing and watching all our videos and everything because it's pretty humorous. So I just hope at least maybe there's three of you on this council that will give this a good consideration. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next. We'll move up to Zoom. Go ahead, Becky.
Okay, can you hear me? All right, I'm here.
A little hard, but go ahead.
Okay, I'm here. I just noticed that I actually agree with Linda Cooley and with Erin. So let's just keep going. No matter what happens, please do your, do what's right for the community and very much.
Thank you. Julie, go ahead. Julie Christie?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
But go ahead and give it a shot.
Are we able to? Well, I'd love you to be able to hear me. They can in-house turn up the volume. I'm going to try my end. Is that better? Okay, thank you for your patience. And thank you, everybody, for attending. I think this is a really important conversation that doesn't need to be personal or emotional. I think there's a lot of prejudice when it comes to people that have been looking from the inside versus the outside in. My experience is that I have stayed due diligent with my eyes within the community council meetings is because of the performance. There are unbelievable numerous things throughout several minimum action. Humiliating speakers, lying, making sure we have certain people and individuals on our council and in our commissions that already have their mind predetermined. Have a lot of issues that from a professional standpoint, I cannot condone and have known. I have been respectful and polite, listening to those thoughts and concerns that are known. However, the change has been very stagnant. I already know tonight we have two council people. Their deliberation already done, so please think wisely, my friends.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom or the public wish to comment? Yes, go ahead, Darcy.
I'm Darcy Lima, and I just want to say we have no perfect friends, lovers, neighbors, family members, city managers. I think people need to take the stick out of their eye before they start accusing people of one thing or another, and I believe I don't always agree with Mandy Mager on everything, but I think she does an outstanding job of doing all she can for the benefit of Blue Lake. And I don't know who you guys think you're going to get to that has more heart and soul invested in this, in this city than Mandy. So I support Mandy Mager.
Thank you very much. Yes, go ahead, Chair.
Hi, my name is Chairice Bowman. I just kind of want to give you guys a report. I attended the fundraiser for the Blue Lake Bike Park that happened at the Arcata Theater Lounge, standing room only. We have a great community here of bikers that have built a relationship, not only with the city, but with entities and have created an industry that is just amazing. This movie is going to be sent to jury and will eventually be available on YouTube. In that, there's an amazing interview that they have with Mandy at the Lager, talking about this community and the future that we can build here. She is integral to a thriving community. I don't think we've ever had anyone who has had more heart invest in this community. She's multi-generations. This is her home place, her birthplace, her she makes this community the foremost in her efforts and her thoughts. And I just believe that we are absolutely blessed to have somebody with so much commitment. And the community, the RCMBA recognizes, and she got a standing ovation.
Thank you. Next. Yes, go ahead. Just while we're all where we have just a couple more minutes till the 15 minute mark, and we, go ahead.
I appreciate you guys taking this meeting. So I have a different take than other people that have spoken up. I have had personal issues with the management. I've lived here since 1972. I'm 60 years old. I was never involved in politics in any way, shape, or form until I moved next door to the ex-mayor. Besides all of the harassment that I got from the mayor, it was the manager who actually sent letters, had the city attorney send me letters about my dog. I put up a shed. I was made to remove that shed. There were like, I don't know, maybe 10 complaints made by the mayor herself, not not people who lived around me. Between Mandy and Adelaine, the first six years living at 410 Broad has been hell. I have anxiety already. And yeah, so I got involved because, because you have to come and say how you feel about things that are going on. And I've been incredibly unhappy. I hit a brick wall. And that's when I started coming to meetings. I'm glad that you all have had great experiences, but I absolutely have not.
Thank you very much. We have time for one more, two more comments at the most. Anyone else in the public? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Barbara Russell. So I know we all have different ideas about things, but we have a new city council, and Mandy works for the city council, and this seems like it's a city council of the people. And so I think we have an opportunity to do, well, because so it's a new city council. There can be, she works for the city council, and if we stay involved, then she can do what we want her to do. But otherwise, she's been doing the best she can. I truly believe that, even though I disagree with a lot of the things that she wanted to do, but she's doing the best she can. She's very talented. She's great at starting things, and I think if we stay involved, then you guys, you know, we can really just imagine what we could do if we're all on the same side. Because this is a special place and it is worth fighting for, and I'm very appreciative of my neighbors, friends and neighbors that have been disruptors because now we're involved. I am really appreciative. And, but I know that each one of us is a valuable contributor, and this place is so awesome. And she's talented as heck, and there was something else I was going to say, but I forgot. That's enough for me.
Thank you very much. Yes, Justin, go ahead.
My name is Justin. My first interaction with Mandy was not a positive one. I, I don't know if she remembers. She was simply enforcing rules. I am nothing if not appreciative of people who enforce rules. Since then, I've become to learn she is doing the best she can with what she has. I've come to come to almost consider her as a friend, even though we did not start off on the world's greatest terms. I honestly don't think we could find someone that with a better heart, Blue Lake, than Mandy. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. We are at the 15 minute mark. Does the council wish to move into closed session? Okay, we have consensus of the council to move into closed session.
I would just like to mention that folks can come back at 6:30. We're going to have open session beginning at 6:30, and if there's anybody who didn't have an opportunity to speak, there'll be another opportunity later.
I want to apologize, everyone, for cutting the comments short. It's, it's just because we need to get in a closed session so that we can open up for a normal session again. Thank you.
Can I get the motion maker in a second?
Motion to move to closed session. Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Welcome back. City Council is now closed session. Ryan, would you like to report out?
Thanks. The council took no reportable action in closed session. The council did not complete its discussion, and we'll back the next closed session on site.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and we're now in open session. Go ahead and do the call to order. Do we need to reestablish a quorum or can we, no?
I think that was just me not really, I've never gone in and out of sessions like that, so it sounds like we don't have to do that.
All right, let's go ahead and stand for the flag. All right. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. We'll go ahead and open up the floor for public comment. The public comment, or public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope and authority of the city of Blue Lake and is not on the agenda. Council may provide up to 15 minutes for the public input session to assure that each individual presentation is heard. The council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda in time the council takes up each specific. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Lori.
My name is Lori Ponti, and when I was looking at tonight's agenda and packet for this meeting, I saw that there was a link for the best frequently asked questions. And I've had a few comments and concerns about the, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at this. I don't know how new it is to the, to the website. So on page one, there's a solar panel in the picture, and I know that the best project that we're speaking about in Blue Lake or talking about in Blue Lake isn't solar, so I feel like that is misleading. And then on page two, paragraph one cites a renewable energy and compares it to Tesla batteries. We're not talking about Tesla batteries, as far as I understand, with the project, projected project in Blue Lake. So I think that's misleading. And then on page three, it talks about property tax revenue. My question is, will the increased value of the property, will that revenue be put aside for cleanup of the other parts of that net out there other than taking down the, the structure? There's a large fuel mess, and when I was standing outside at the last board for a council meeting, I asked the other representative, not Jeff, from Power Transitions, if that was included, and he shook his head no. He said that would be too expensive, so I would hope that if this project, as it's going forward, if that question is asked and again, and considered, because I think the big, the big ticket is going to be cleaning up the fuel mess. On page four, it shows a lot of examples of best projects in the community. The Rancheria, Fortuna, Mad River Hospital, McKinleyville Microgrid, Airport Microgrid, Riedel Best. None of these are what Blue Lake, as far as I understand, are considering for a best project. And so it was mentioned that we're looking at apples versus zucchinis. I think this is a prime example of what Blue Lake's projecting to do on Taylor Way and what we are putting on the city website to suggest that's what we're going to have. So I would, I would hope that that is, this is all looked at carefully and maybe corrected. On page six, there's reference to the municipal, Humboldt Municipal Bay Water District.
30 seconds, Lori.
And is there anything in writing that shows support? Does Arcata Fire or Blue Lake Fire have anything in writing? I also want to say that at a recent council meeting, there was reference to pamphlets that were spread out to get people to come to the, the town hall and reference to misinformation propaganda. I was one of the distributors of that pamphlet so that we could get as many people involved so they could ask questions and be informed. And I feel like this is maybe misinformation and propaganda. So hopefully there's some change to these, this paperwork. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Yes, go ahead. Next, Justin. Are you guys okay with the timer? Are we okay with the timer? The audio timer, is it okay if I have this?
Oh.
It appears as though you guys skipped over the approval of the agenda and went straight to public comment. I want to say I find this current agenda offensive, the fact that you split up the closed sessions. I find it respectful of the public's time to not be able to be fully informed. You all ran on transparency, and I feel that splitting up the agenda in the way in which you did is a major disrespect to the public's time and efforts in wanting to be involved in their government.
Thank you. Next, please. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, in the back?
So this is about best, but the City Manager as well, is that?
Yeah.
Non-agendized. Non-agend, that's why I'm asking.
Thank you.
Well, okay, so I'll just say that I find it disturbing that all of the relevant information around safety in this project, especially with it being right on the river, is, well, I, it's irresponsible, I think. And it's making people more suspicious, confused, and not able to discuss and come together. And Eco News has a wonderful article, March issue, on the lithium industry in California. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I agree with that gentleman right there, what he just said, because I also have noticed that the word transparency has been used a lot to just to pick at people and try to divert other people to agree with their, whatever that they, their agendas. And I think the word transparency is being used quite often, and I agreed exactly with what he said, so I just want to reiterate that.
Thank you very much. Next, in the back?
I'm very gateless. I did want to comment on the link that was also made to the brochure and just say that I went on to Casio, and they have a dashboard. And that dashboard lists out all projects, best projects in Humboldt County. You can narrow it down to the county. And that all of the projects, commercial, residential, and utility, only are 18 megawatts altogether. That is the entire county, so that might be something we consider when we're comparing the entire county. Best project residential doesn't even equate to what we're talking about. And second, I did go down to the Humboldt County where we get our water and the pump station is, because there was reference that was right on the river. That backs up against the hillside, and it's way up on a platform that's probably about 15 feet in the air, so just for clarity about the brochure.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from public wish to comment? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Erin McClure. So I'm usually talking about a lot of different things, and so tonight I'm going to mention something else that's been on my mind. So Powers Creek is, that name Powers is used in a lot of different places here in Blue Lake. And I don't know if anybody knows the background on that, but David Powers was my great-great-grandfather, so I'd like all the signs. Or we start having a conversation at least about a lot of the signs being changed to David Powers Creek before that creek gets changed to some name that now we don't even know how to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Yes, she's getting up behind you, then I'll get you next.
I'll just take a minute. Mary Ann is bonding. Hi. Hello.
Hello.
So I'm a little confused. I'm just confused. I just recently found out about this B E S S, best, best. And that's strange because then I found out that it's been going on negotiations for four years or something like that. So I'm just, I'm confused, and I'm trying to understand. I mean, the main thing I'm trying to understand here is why in the world would this city sell an asset to an outside company that has no interest in generations and decades of assets for us, for all of us? That is an asset. That is an asset, not to be given away, not to be sold away for three magic beans. That could provide power, actual power, for decades to come, for this city, for this valley, for McKinleyville, for who knows? That's a valuable commodity to just give away for what? No guarantee that that is renewable. There, there's no guarantee that's renewable. Are they producing renewable energy with that? My understanding is no. Have they guaranteed that they are going to dismantle that entire area and clean it up? My understanding is no. Can anybody answer these questions? Because I'm, I'm not understanding why we're giving this asset away or why we're even considering giving this asset for some magic beans that aren't going to provide us with anything except possibly another mess another decade from now. So if, if somebody can explain why that's a good idea, convince me because I'm here to be convinced.
Thank you very much. If you want to follow up with somebody after the meeting, you're welcome to. One of the council members or someone from the public. Anyone else from the public wish to comment?
Hi, my name is Maria Mahegan. I would just like to say that I would like a town hall, another town hall meeting, more informational meetings about best project and also possible housing development over on Taylor Way. And I just think that more information is valuable to keeping the peace and having everybody communicate. keeping the peace and having everybody uh, communicate well with each other. It's good to uh, get more information and not spread rumors or um, have emotions contribute to emotions getting out of control. I think it's um, that would be very valuable.
Great, thank you very much.
So please.
Anyone else from the public? Yes, go ahead.
I just want to bring up that um, the February twelfth meeting, the packet that was put with the agenda has been removed. It was very upsetting to me that someone would take. I mean, the packet was on there, it had information on it, and I don't know who removed it or who put it somewhere else. Um, I think someone told me it was somewhere else on the website. But I don't think that uh, information that's given out to the city should be removed and either be removed or put somewhere.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Uh, Becky, go ahead on Zoom. Becky, are you still wanting to speak? Last call, Becky. Did we remove the?
Becky said she can't unmute.
There we go. No. Can you unmute her?
Doesn't say that anything's suspended. They're all in.
If you click on here, can you unmute her over on the right-hand side there?
Hello?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, so please um, unlock Zoom because everybody's locked out. There's about nine people. Juliana, Angela, um, Trevor and Trevor Graham. Nobody can get in, so you have them all locked out. And they're all trying, so, alright. That's all I had to say.
How did you get in, Becky?
I stayed in and I was left in the waiting room. And it looks like about eight other people were too, but some people got logged out. So um, they're trying to log in now and nobody can get back in. So. Mine stayed on. I don't know why, but it did. I got lucky, I guess.
Becky, do you want to go ahead and comment or did you just want to tell us about that?
That was it. So you guys just take care of that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment? We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment again, uh, after we resolve this issue. Is that okay, Ryan? Can we?
What about lockmating? Is that something that?
Might have to do with it. So for people who are just going to this on Zoom, um, we're in public comment right now. Does anyone have any public comment to make that's not on the agenda, that's not on the agenda? Alright, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move it back to um, the public's, one final call for a comment. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and uh, move on to item number five. City clerk duties and positions recruitment discussion action. Um, city manager Mager, I know that you didn't really have a lot more to listen on, on this topic.
Yeah, so this is being brought back. Um, council has um, has an ad hoc of uh, council member Louis Luso and council member Napier. Um, I've presented uh, draft job descriptions, draft recruitment budgets. Um, and kind of what my recommendation is for trying to hire for a city clerk. And so I think this is now back at the council level to provide direction to staff.
Let's go ahead and wait for Kat to get back and then we'll go ahead and start the conversation. I didn't realize she was gone. So with the ad hoc, going to comment on your findings or recommendations to the council?
Uh, I think in the packet, there is a summary in the form of an S-bar with situation background, the assessment, and then the recommendations for prioritizing the recruitment of a city clerk. There were some adjustments and some uh, communication back and forth between myself and Mandy um, regarding prioritizing a couple of items that are listed in the description of the city clerk duties. Uh, one being the city clerk serves as the liaison between the public and the city council by disseminating information in person through cor- correspondence and through the city website and social media outlets. I would like to see that as an emphasis in the position um, and a, a priority. And uh, uh, city manager Major Mager indicated that that would be a possibility. And so that is um, I believe that that's where we're at as far as uh, the recommendations were to move forward immediately or as soon as possible for a uh, a position, whether that would be a temporary position to relieve uh, her of the minutes taking duties. So she may uh, participate in uh, some other city manager duties. Or if it is something that we are going to recruit as a full position and um, look at some adjustments in the, in the job description, duties, per diem, part-time, full-time salary, wage, uh, those are the discussions I believe are up for comment. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'll put that. I just want to recap that. I think there's a couple pieces. Uh, I, maybe you had some communications I wasn't part of on the job description. But to be clear, so uh, Michelle and I were uh, became an ad hoc to look more comprehensively at the city clerk position. And our, uh, and that was at the behest of the uh, city manager requesting assistance in taking uh, minutes for meetings. So we had two findings on there. Um, the first one, and I apologize, this was, you know, I never thought I was gonna be doing a public dissemination of our ad hoc findings. But the first was an acknowledgement right away and an authorization um, to engage on transcription services for this. But that was not to be in lieu of having a city clerk. But that was the first finding. I think that was authorized and sent out February seventh. The second findings, and this is again stemming from that original conversation of the position of the city clerk. Um, and if you have packets there, it more fully uh, talks about the need for a city clerk. And I guess I could uh, on the assessment, read that or what? Or you could. You have a better voice. Okay. Should I read the whole document or just the recommendation?
Is there in the package?
Okay. Um, I think on the assessment part, the absence of a dedicated city clerk may impact the city administration, uh, the city's administrative efficiency and internal oversight. Without a designated clerk, essential functions including a public records management, meeting coordination, and regulatory compliance may be dispersed among other staff members, potentially affecting service delivery. This vacancy coincides with the transition of other key administrative personnel, requiring the city to rely significantly on contracted services for legal, engineering, planning, and financial functions. The recommendations that we have for the council, uh, first is to prioritize the recruitment of a city clerk. Uh, second would be to review and update the city clerk job description. I think the, the need for a city clerk goes well beyond transcription and provision, uh, provision of records. If you look at uh, city clerks and other organizations, actually quite a bit that they can do on behalf of the city. With that, we recommend that we work with staff to assess and revise the duties and job description of the city clerk to reflect current needs. To provide any proposed revisions for staff input and colla- collaboration. And to expect that city clerk responsibilities currently managed by various administrative personnel will be consolidated into a full-time city clerk position. In the packet, you will find referenced a current job description and duties. Uh, that's a recent one. There are actually several others and they've, they have uh, morphed over the years. Um, we also have relevant ordinances and resolution. Uh, within our ordinances, it states very clearly that the appointed positions of the city clerk, a treasurer, and the city attorney uh, fall under the, I guess, the jurisdiction, for lack of a better word, of the city council. And so we're seeking to maintain that integrity of the position. What did happen was a resolution in twenty twenty that gave all of the powers and authorities and responsibilities of the city clerk and housed that under the city manager. And so now we have a city manager who is also a city clerk. And we don't have a, a city treasurer. Luckily, we have a city attorney. But uh, it becomes uh, one, an incredible challenge for one individual to do all of those tasks. And I think that that's really an uh, unfair burden. It also um, doesn't address a need for separation of power. And uh, quite frankly, I think that a city clerk can provide services to the public in a manner that should be unbiased, could be accessible, is accountable, should be recorded. Uh, for instance, if individuals have a complaint, that city clerk can take that complaint. They can log it, they can register it. It gets disseminated to the city manager. The city manager knows how to disperse this to the appropriate people, to workshop it and resolve it. And the city clerk can then record its status or follow up if it hasn't occurred. But by developing, developing a tracking system through the city clerk, I think that we can improve accountability and improve service to our residents. I've gone off topic here, off the, off the map. With our reference sources, we should uh, advising the council uh, to review current job descriptions and duties. Uh, relevant ordinances and resolutions and the written policies and procedures because there is some conflict here. Um, and then to review and adjust compensation as needed. Finally, we have initiate an external recruitment process. And this process would include targeting qualified candidates utilizing external resources and job platforms similar to indeed local staffing agencies and recruit group, recruitment firms as needed. Uh, we're also advising to the council to establish a clear selection process. The city council should outline expectations for reviewing and processing and presenting applications to ensure a structured and transparent hiring process. Uh, we should also determine whether the, that position will be hourly or salaried and the number of hours. Lastly, and this is addressing to council, because of resolution eleven fifty-three which consolidated the city clerk position into the city manager position, uh, I would, I would encourage this council to consider uh, rescinding or otherwise revoking resolution eleven fifty-three and to separate those two positions.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the findings of the ad hoc committee.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work. Any comments from council on the findings from the ad hoc?
Well, I have a question for Ryan. Um, so if we were to rescind uh, resolution eleven fifty-three, how, how does that happen? What's the process there? Do we just make another resolution that rescinds it?
Yes, so to rescind a resolution, you need to adopt a new resolution that rescinds by reference that resolution. Um, and i- if, you know, that could be, can't happen tonight, obviously. Could come back to a future meeting for consideration. Uh, we'd have to look at it. Um, you may want to time that with the appointment of whomever is ultimately hired as a city clerk so that we're not without.
Right.
Somebody appointed to those duties. But yes, a resolution can rescind a resolution.
And we'll have to look back because you finally had been designated as our city clerk previous. So the council did take action to appoint her as city clerk. Um, and to a point, um, Tony was going to, was deputy. Um, and I think I was also, Tony was gonna move into the deputy city clerk. Once you got a little more training, I bumped down deputy city clerk. So then the band was out, at least take thirty minutes. And um, so at some point, the council, previous council did appoint a new city clerk. So they did take formal action. I don't know if in that action, if they rescinded um, the, that resolution or not. Or if that action acts in, in the same, kind of the same mechanism.
Would that be uh, would it, so would it be necessary then, since it obviously has moved on to a another format?
Yeah, that's what I'm not sure, since we did.
The previous council did appoint Honally, but we did not um, as a separate action, rescind resolution eleven fifty-three. So those, so unless the, the action of appointing somehow invalidated it, I don't, I believe it still stands. Correct?
Yeah, I don't know what was done to Honally. Um, I'd have to look at it. Um, certainly when you appointed somebody to be a city clerk, it, it could have affected an implied repeal of the resolution that appointed Mandy as both city clerk and city manager. Um, we just have to go back and look and see and clean that up if need be.
Would revoking eleven fifty-three preclude city manager Mager from actually being the deputy clerk or what would that do?
So the city needs a city clerk. Um, and the city clerk can appoint deputies. Um, so without somebody holding the position of city clerk, you are without a city clerk. And the functions of the city clerk, both statutorily and under our municipal code, on by.
Any other questions? Or comment?
I did want to comment that in the past, what has happened is the city clerk position, um, city clerk position earlier had been appointed and appointed by the council. And through changes in staff and changes I, idea of how we could best use staff and manage staff, however it was. But then it became that the city clerk is also the, you know, supposed to be the financial director. But that problem becomes that we end up having a city clerk that is under the city manager. And I strongly disagree with that. We're a very small town. We have some pretty good resources. And it doesn't matter, and this is not any, any um, black cloud upon Mandy or her integrity. But we should not have a system that inherently moves itself to some kind of, I don't know, trick or for. To this separating out. Um, and I feel and it's clear in our ordinances, that is the intent, also expresses within our ordinances that the city, that the city. And this isn't a position where it should be a battle between the two. This is another res- This is another resource for the city manager, but separate. And that they are, they would report with, to the city council.
I have a question. Mandy, are you looking for direction as far as action on this to go ahead and move forward with the recruitment? Or how, how are we doing with that process?
Yeah, so my, my request has been for council to provide direction on recruiting this position. Honestly, right now, it's under my purview to hire a city clerk. I could go out and recruit for a city clerk right now. The council, but the problem is the council has to appoint the city clerk. So I could go hire someone for the position. I could contact for services. However, we wanted to structure that. But if the council doesn't appoint the person to the position as clerk, then I'm stuck again. So that's why I came to council to make sure that we're all on the same page on, on this position. And to also let council know that we've had a hard time keeping clerks. We don't have a hard time keeping our office administrative staff, but the combining of those duties just doesn't seem to be that great of a fit. And that's why I'd recommended contracting for someone who specifically would just fill those clerk duties on a contract basis, because there's not enough in work on a daily basis for clerk duties. That's why it's always been the clerk also, you know, helps at the front desk. They take the water bills. They do accounts receivables. They go collect the mail. You know, they help, because there's just not a lot of other clerk functions on a daily basis. But what I've had issues with as our office needs have grown, as we've had, you know, things have just requiring a higher level of accounting and administrative function, where the, they're just not really meshing. And so a lot of people that we have moved through that position, even though the clerk is part of the duties, everyone who's gotten to this point has kind of tapped out. And so
This point being the minutes?
The minutes, the meetings.
Okay.
You know, it's a lot. You know, if you're not used to being in this type of forum, then, you know, so it's like they, they do really well at the administrative stuff at the office. I really like that. But I haven't been able to find that fit of someone who wants to do both. And so, and I just don't have enough work for just a clerk.
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I feel very strongly that the, the title is misnamed. And the city clerk actually is a position that needs to be elevated to supervisory level, supervising the other admin assistants. Also, the vision that I had and Kat had in our ad hoc, I'm speaking for you a little bit, was that this position could also serve as a buffer for the public input concerns at a level of, I don't know, just, just a buffer for you to be able to perform the duties of the city manager rather than being burdened with, not burdened with is a bad word. Anyway, more attention being paid to that particular function of the city clerk in addition to other needs that you might have. And so while I understand that you're, you are work with two. Turning up being that position, as I understand it, I've read that keeps the meeting rolling and the order keeps up. All I do understand of those job duties with the recruitment process wait, that is when position making sure it's the job are to ensure we have understands that, that's I would maybe change a little
I can follow up on the comment. And this again is from our ordinances. This is under chapter two, one twelve, point oh seven, oh, powers and duties of this manager. Authority over employees. It shall be the duty of the city manager. And he or she shall have the authority to control, order, and give directions to all heads of departments and to subordinate official officers and employees of the city under his or her jurisdiction through their department heads, with the exception of the appointed positions of city clerk, treasurer, and city attorney. Power of appointment and removal. It shall be the duty of the city manager to, and he or she shall appoint, remove, promote, and demote any and all officers and employees of the city of Blue Lake, subject to all applicable personnel ordinances, rules, and regulations, with the exception of the appointed positions of city clerk, treasurer, and city attorney. I think that this ordinance is making it really clear to have separate from the city manager, a direct line from the people to the city council. And I do see that by having the city clerk position, the duties dispersed among several people, then one could say that there's not enough full-time work for them. But to reconstitute that position and maybe even elevate that position, I think it's more appropriate to the needs of the city and to the public.
Thank you.
I would just like to say I agree with the logic presented. I too think it's important to rank between and buddy other administrative tasks so that they are not able to prioritize the work of the council and the work of government, which I feel is, is critical. A critical in building trust with a community and a
Christopher, no, no. Any further comments from council before we open up for the public?
So can I just clarify? So I, I understand, I understand the thought process. I'm not sure how this would work with, with work, with actual day-to-day work. So if you're proposing a position that's at a higher level, what else will this person be doing besides clerk duties?
I think that was included in our second findings, that we would be working together as a council and city manager to hash out what those duties could be. I think a good starting place would be identifying all of the duties that are currently scattered amongst the different administrative staff and bring those forward. And then together, we can work, whether it's as an ad hoc or with a full council or as a workshop, to take a look at those together and see what might work best.
I would, I would say, in addition to being the liaison between the public and the city, the supervisory duties and oversight of some of the other administrative work, packet prep, website, update, communication, forums, and formats that might be a little more accessible to our public as far as updates on what's going on, projects that are happening. We could get really creative with it. I, 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 I don't know, looking at the, at the it seems that there would be some in an off election year. Because I know that that's very, very busy time. But anyway, those would be just a few of the things that I had ideas about that would take things off of your plate and your responsibilities for posting things on what's happening and, and preparing the packets and ensuring that there is layer communication between the public and the
Yeah, I, I, that would be great. That's, I mean, this felt, no, but I can't put you guys on it. I'm just concerned that that level of work is like twenty hours a month, is it? The rest of our front office staff, they're not just administrative, they're financial. They are overseen by finance manager. And I think that's a critical role that needs to be maintained because their, their real important function is accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll. And that's really, really where they need, they need the finance manager to oversee those functions. So I wouldn't see the, and even though, because we the straight, straight they're really very much more on the accounting side of things. And so that's, I would just want to make sure finance managers still maintain oversight of that. Because those are, those are very critical balances for everything that we do, especially in a small office. Everything is able checked and the administrative side is, you know, is a much I would say I would love someone, you know, to help me. But the deputy or the city clerk, Ari Rika, is a deputy city manager. Like, that would be awesome to have that. I mean, everyone in my team, you know, helps each other. And I'm probably the only one, even though we have all these managers and supervisors and things and program managers, I'm probably the only one that doesn't have actually someone to help them in their work. So that would, that could, you know, I, I could see where there could be work there. I, I just do not see that I have enough work for a full-time person who's just focused on clerk duties.
Okay.
So, but if there was some ability to encompass more, then
Maybe we can look at a hybrid option. But in the meantime, are you, do you need anything from us to immediately recruit somebody to relieve you of what is happening right now?
Yeah, I think just clear direction on which way to go. I mean, I, I think we're, we've been talking a lot about it, but then when I think we get close to it and then
I feel really, I feel really strongly that we need to get a temporary person from a temporary agency to help relieve with the specific duties of meeting prep, meeting minutes, et cetera, until we can figure out possibly another option for a position, perhaps a hybrid position. That's thought.
Do you have anyone in mind that could fulfill those duties?
I have asked everyone that I can think of.
I mean, uh, someone we could subcontract to or
I don't.
Any other comments?
Yes, I, I need to follow up with a comment that you made in stating that the financial manager oversees the accounts receivable, accounts payable, and payroll, and that that is your checks and balances. And that isn't. That's called oversight. But it is, it really checks and balances. Because you're also the city manager and you're over, you're over the finance manager. And again, it's separation of powers, which is really key, and especially for small governments. Just imagine if it wasn't you there, and if it wasn't, you know, Vicky there, and if it wasn't people we didn't know. And the ability that people would have to be able to manipulate our information, our reports, money coming in, money's going out. Separation of powers is really important to protect the institution of the city. So again, I, I disagree to say that we have checks and balances because we have a financial manager there. It's good that we have that financial manager, and it's wonderful that they can help, they can assist with those administrative staff. But that's more of an oversight than it is any form of separation of powers or checks and balances.
I don't, I don't.
We also don't have an appointed treasurer. So, you know, we, luckily, at least we have a city attorney, but that's contract. We don't have an appointed treasurer. We don't have an appointed city clerk. And these are some of the, the framework that makes a healthy functioning institution.
You also have a contract accountant and you have auditors. I mean, there are a lot of levels of review that everything goes through. So, you know, I mean, there are a lot, I mean, I don't know, maybe we're getting off the topic of city clerk. I'm not sure.
I'm just saying, as far as it went for, to say with finances that we have, that, that the financial manager is checks and balances, isn't. You are correct that we have an accountant and we have an auditor. But as far as the whole other part of administration and providing services to the public, we have accountability within that too. And I feel like that comes a long way through, through the position of the city clerk. So again, I would recommend to the city council, if we have to direct the city manager to please to provide all of those duties that are currently dispersed amongst other staff that would be appropriate to the city clerk, then we can work together on developing what this job description would be. And then I, I do want to make the point that
Member of your, would you mind finishing up on that?
Yes, I will. On the city clerk contract description that you provided, again, you put under administrative direction. And then in our policy manual, you have this repeatedly, the city clerk reporting to the city manager. And again, that isn't the intent of our ordinances.
Okay, I, you know, I, I just need someone to do the city clerk duties. I think if council wants to change this, I'm, I'm happy for you to do that. I just need someone to do these duties. I'm, I'm six meetings deep in meeting minutes. I'm doing all the preparation. I'm, you know, so, and I've been asking for this for months. So if, I'm, whatever the council wants to do at this point.
Well, to be clear, we did authorize several months ago that you could go right ahead and, and get some, yeah, to get transcription service and that we would follow up with these job description duties. But it is problematic that in the policy handbook, and then again, in the job descriptions that you provide, you, you have the city clerk reporting to you, and that isn't the appropriate structure.
Let's
I would just say that that's a council adopted policy manual. City manager created policy manual. I mean, a prior council adopted that.
I understand that, but these were edits made by this city manager to, as they're doing their policy handbook update.
I, I think one thing to think about as you shape this position is who does manage the day-to-day supervision of the city clerk? You know, obviously, the council as a five-member body is not well-suited to supervise somebody's day-to-day, especially a new employee. So there is, and it's very common throughout almost all cities that don't have an elected city clerk, that they do, to a certain extent, report to the city manager. They have independent duties. They have statutory duties. They're bonded. They take an oath. But most of the day-to-day function flows through the city manager. And I, I, I don't foresee a situation where we have a city clerk that isn't managed in any capacity by the city manager and solely reports to the council. I just don't know how you bring in a new employee and manage that employee's day-to-day as a five-member body that meets once a month. So I, I think about that as you draft how you want this position to be. But at a certain level, that person who's probably going to be an inexperienced new employee needs daily supervision. And if not the city manager, then who? I think about that as well.
Thank you.
One of the things that have come up in the past was to recruit for possibly a part-time city clerk. And generally, we haven't tried to do that in the time I've been on council. We haven't, we, we actually, when we found Honaly, she was responding to an advertisement for administrative assistant. So I would very much like to go forward with recruitment for a city clerk and make that make that recruitment be a part-time or possibly full-time recruitment. And the rationale behind that is that there could be somebody in our community or not far away who has the skill set to perform as a city clerk. And maybe they're retired or semi-retired, and they absolutely don't want to work full-time. And by making this a full-time job, we're excluding that, that's, that pool of candidates who might just slip right in and be the perfect fit. So I would very much like to start a recruitment and leave that open as part-time, three-quarter time, full-time, whatever. If we don't have enough duties for a full-time job, maybe we have just exactly the right amount of duties for a part-time job. And also that leaves people the flexibility to come in here in the evenings and sit here with us till midnight and not want to kill themselves at the end of the day. So, um, it might work. It just might. So I'd like, I'd like that.
Well, I think that, sorry. Well, I think that, sorry.
No, please, Michelle.
I, I, before we recruit for the position of a city clerk, we need to have it crystal clear about what the position entails. And what the job description describes. And in the meantime, we really need to get some relief for Mandy. And so I would propose if we do move forward with recruiting for a city clerk in the generic, most generic term. Or the old existing job description with some possibility of modification. In addition to that, uh, um. Seek out some temporary through its periscope or other function, a, uh, uh, somebody can help. Note-taking duties.
I agree, I agree.
I agree wholeheartedly with Michelle, just that out, so I got my.
I think we can do both simultaneously.
Make the motion.
Okay.
Do we, we need to open up the public? Okay.
Well, I would move that we authorize the city manager to begin recruitment immediately for a part-time. To full-time city clerk, leaving that status open. And to reflect whatever fine-tuning of the job description that the ad hoc committee would do. And simultaneously to be looking into staffing, to find somebody to, uh, come in on a temporary basis. And, uh, and really mandate of all these backlog duties.
Second.
Okay, so. So we need, so we have a motion on the floor, Ryan. We can go ahead and pause that and open up the public for comment, okay, great. All right, I want to go ahead and open up the floor for a public comment. Go ahead.
Hi, Dave Ponti, and regarding the ad hoc committee's board on the assessment, second paragraph. To paraphrase, uh, the key administrative personnel require the city to rely significantly on contract services. Um, as a consequence of the loss of the clerk. And I don't know how long Ryan's been legal counsel. Um, and there was the. Debate with Kat and Mandy about the financial functions. But interestingly, uh, looking at engineering and planning, which as far as I know. Have both been provided by SHN long before there was ever any problem with the clerk. And, um. I've always questioned that circumstance because it seems that SHN has some sort of undue influence. In this community, they, they always seem to be responsible for just everything that's done. In terms of city. Programs and streets and parks and everything. Um, so exactly how the loss of a.
Mr. Ponti, would you mind go ahead and, oh, you're coming back to the court part, thank you.
How the loss of a clerk influences how the city. Determines how their engineering and planning is done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Yes, go ahead.
The city clerk's position is really. And they're not an administrative assistant, they're not an assistant to the city manager. It is the city clerk positions. They're responsible to sit in these meetings and make sure you're all doing things according to the Brown Act. They're responsible, they should have a notary. Um, certification that they can notarize documents. They should be on-site anytime that our office hours are open. And this contract isn't even. And since we don't have city ordinances that say what that job description is. It has to go by the state laws. And if you go through and codify the duties of the city clerk. It's very important that you follow your state laws because you don't have an ordinance that states what your city clerk is. And the city clerk and the treasurer and the city manager is the balance of power in this community. And to give a city manager total authority over the city clerk's position is really scary to me. However, they passed a resolution to give the city manager the city clerk's position. Without an ordinance is beyond me. I just don't even see how you can do that legally. Um, this budget, I don't know what this means. But this synopsis, this budget synopsis that you would pay a city clerk sixty-four hundred dollars a year. I looked at the average salaries of city clerks. And you're, it's, it's, it costs a lot of money, so maybe that's why you didn't do it. Because it costs, you know, seventy thousand dollars a year for a good city clerk. And you have to bring someone in here who's trained, has training to be a city clerk. You don't just bring them in as an administrative assistant and then try to teach them to be a city clerk. They come in here with skills and qualifications to be your city clerk. So, you know, realistically, five hundred and forty dollars for ten hours a week or whatever that meant, I have no idea. And I think you just need to pull the actual, you know, codes that tell you what your city clerk is supposed to do for the city. And trying to make her an assistant administrative assistant is, I mean, you could pass an ordinance. And take part of those duties and give, give her some help. But you can't just take that position and make it an administrative position.
Ten seconds. No, go ahead, you're not, you have, you have ten. Anyone else from the public? Uh, yes, go ahead.
So I really appreciate all the work that the council is, has spent their time, our ad hoc committee. And everybody else looking at this. I also, in all the forty-five years I've lived in Blue Lake, you know, always appreciated when I needed to come into the city. And the city clerk was there. Um, it is a big job and it is an important job. If they are the person who oversees our elections, they are the person who is supposed to have the expertise according to the government code. The expertise about the Brown Act, who would tell you if you're in violation. That's why your city clerk is the person who's supposed to be with the city manager in our case of our ordinance. And with someone on the council, it could be and/or, and they help to make sure that that. Abides by the Brown Act. So that is a really serious thing that our city clerk does. Our city clerk, not, you know, they assist the council. It sounds like the meeting minutes and taking all of that or being at public hearings, all the other things they would do. Takes a lot of time, so that, it sounds like that's an issue. Um, you know, they are in charge of our records. And that's super important if any of us come in here and we want to see what happened two years ago, what happened one. How did you arrive at this decision? Those records need to be kept in order, filed, know that whether or not they can be released to the public. If we come in here and make a public records request, that is handled by our city clerk. Um, it, you know, and the ability to know about the Open Records Act. It does, Records Act, it does say that someone has to be here on duty. The entire time your office is open in order to be able to assist anybody to come in here and examine our public records. Or ask for help to find them. Um, so that's a big deal. If you make a big public request, then that's a big deal. Your city clerk has to know right where they are, go find them, get you copies of it. And our city clerk, um, just has so many important jobs. So maybe perhaps to keep somebody interest enough pay. Or this organization for the California City Clerks Association provides lots of training. There's all kinds of webinars, all kinds of things that they can do. And perhaps you would give them some time during their day to make sure they have the correct training and opportunity to fulfill that really important role. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public before I take it up to Zoom? Seeing none, we'll move up to Zoom. Julie, go ahead. Becky, do you want to go ahead and go? Uh, Becky or Julie, are either of you there?
I'm, yes, we are able to unmute now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
That was just a little technical error there. We had to wait till we were allowed to unmute. Um, thank you for this, uh, motion and then going to public comment. I appreciate that. Kat, great, great words there. Um, really appreciate that. I would think something productive for the council would also be, um, this goes right back to a great clerk, okay? Or the text stuff I was saying maybe for an agenda item, but archiving and easy access. So something that we've been discussing since Back Towards Twenty-One has been the city clerk. Lots of dialogue from staff and public, I think just reviewing all that would be something that is really productive. I have already been soliciting this job to a lot of our young locals that have graduated from college. They're already running part-time jobs. Um, several of them work down at Murphy's Market. I, they are ecstatic about something quick like this. Um, I know we're evolving to need maybe more responsibilities involved with it. But in the meantime, it sounds like minutes is something that's a priority. I offered in the past to volunteer a bit for that since Justin's recording the meetings. And, um, I'd be more than happy to help out with minutes for a little bit too, you guys have a lot of experience with that and with all the organizations. Um, but I think we should go forward, get this out there. It's going to evolve, um, however, we should stick with the ordinance we have in the manner that it needs to be. Uh, perhaps revisited, um, however, in the moment, we need some division of power. That's been the thing, not in that power in a negative way, but, um, division of record-keeping and division of separation of record-keeping. So that goes back to my comments earlier. Um, so I do support that and I do think we have some kids here and people that love a part-time job for the minute. You need help with minutes, please just reach out to me. I'm more than happy to try and help in the time I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Uh, Becky, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I want to, um, thank Kat for her comments earlier. Um, I actually read the same thing in the ordinance two years ago when I found out, um, city clerk and city manager were combined. Um, and I would also like to thank Rebecca and Terry for bringing up some of the information there. And also for taking the motion to, um, go ahead and try to get a city clerk in there because we really do need it. So, um, just keep everybody separate. That's what needs to be done, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to public for a final attempt at comment. Seeing none, we'll bring him back to council for a vote.
If I.
Or amendment, go ahead.
If I might, there, there was a law passed in twenty twenty-two that requires salary range be stated on any job posting. In California for employers of fifteen or more, we may or may not meet that fifteen threshold based on seasonal employees. But I think giving some direction as to what your salary range is for full-time versus part-time is going to be necessary. In order to get that job posted, so I think you guys should discuss that as well.
So we do have a salary range for the clerk position, is that right, Manny? Yes. Um, and are you suggesting we have two different salary ranges for part or full-time?
I guess it depends if it's an hourly rate, then no. Um, if it's, if it's, you know, an annual rate, then yes. Um, but my point was more, do you want to revisit that before you post it? To make sure that it's current and competitive with the market.
I believe it was recently adjusted.
Okay.
So it should be current. Um, and, um, yeah. I mean, and if we, if we float the job and we don't get any interest or we learn in the process that we're, we're not offering enough, then we can make those adjustments. But I think, I mean, I'd love to see this job posting and all the places it would go by the end of the week. I don't see any reason to, so hang on to this any longer if we can help it.
I don't recall your motion, um, how, and I think we need to amend a, a price or a salary to it.
I don't, I don't believe we do need to amend it. I believe that the city clerk position has a salary that has been recently adjusted. And so the job can be posted with that salary range included. And if you want me to start over, I will, but, um.
I have your motion recorded.
Yeah, okay, okay. Just a follow-up.
Did, no, did you have a comment?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Um, so we have a first and a second, all of you favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Follow the post and passes unanimously.
And I just want to clarify, Mandy, do you think you can get that posted by the end of the week?
I absolutely will get it posted. I mean, we have a, a job description. I mean, I feel like we have everything. Um, I think there's enough in this job description that it can come back to council and you guys can kind of massage duties. And, you know, maybe it would be helpful at some point for, um, us to. Sit down and talk about our staffing and just what our staff does every day and what, um, duties they have. And so that everyone has a better feel for, um, you know, just what that workload looks like and, um, kind of those skill sets, so.
Can you please include the line and duty, other duties as assigned and then that will allow. Uh, some preparation on their end that we know we're still building out the position.
All right, moving on to council correspondence. Does anyone have anything to report?
Well, we have a packet of council correspondents, but I don't think we need to. To read any of it tonight.
Thank you. The same as reports, council report?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you. All right, um, so we will be moving on into closed session. Um, we need to open that up for public comment, though. Um, we have. Uh, we have, um, we're talking about a conference with real property negotiations. As well as, um, conference with labor negotiations. Does anyone have any comments on either of those? Public comment?
Right, talking with people.
Do we?
We're commenting on the closed session items and there are two of them essentially. There's the, um, real property negotiators, negotiations related to the water tank lease. And there is the, um, city manager's, uh. Um, contract.
Contract.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to comment on either of those? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sure everybody here knows who I am. I work, uh, under Mandy as a public work superintendent for the city here. I've been here for fourteen, almost fifteen years. I've been through two city managers. And I have to tell you, Mandy, lets me do my job, she supports us, and she supports all of the. And I really, I encourage everybody to keep it here. And the, I went through a different gentleman, uh, when I first started. And the one thing that he always did was, uh. He would tell my employees that I'm in charge of something else to do, you know, he would always micromanage me and not let me do my job. And Mandy's not that way. She actually lets me complete and do my job. And if I have an issue, I discuss it with her and we come up with a plan and, uh. Well, and he, you know, it's what we need here is let us do our jobs. We work very hard. And we have somebody that, um, like the previous manager, he would give up my, uh, people, uh, a job to do. And I'd find him doing something else and I'd walk up to him like, hey, what you doing? You know, I gave you this. Oh, well, John told me to do this and right now, and I'm like, okay, uh, that's not really the way it should go. Because if, when they had to go up the ladder, uh, he. Uh, he made sure that they went through me first and, and so, um, but like I said, Mandy's not that way. She always supports us. And it'd be really hard to go through that again with, uh, especially somebody from out of the area who don't know what the city needs. Or the people in the city. And, uh, they said I support her a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public before I take it up to Zoom? Yes, go ahead.
And when I did, and been in almost every inch of Alamo County. And Alamo County had to close court, a culture that very, um, melting pot, a lot of. And with this county, you can't believe that I've always had a thing in my mind that. One of them is I mind my own business and visit me all the way over in Boise. And, uh, I don't like to judge people and I don't like critiquing others. And, um, I've noticed it and just. I've been into social media and I see a lot of that, a lot of backbiting, a lot of, um, negative. Stuff on social media and it really discourages me because this community is supposedly caring and loving, but then I see a lot of. Division and a lot of bad mouthing and backstabbing, a lot of rumors, negative rumors. And, um, me personally, through my experience owning a small tree business here. Um, I've never had any problems dealing with Mandy as the city manager here. I've never had problems with the city workers here. No negative conflicts or anything in that aspect, nothing negative. And I'm, I don't like politics and you'll barely ever see me in here. But I'm in here particularly because of this one particular issue. And it really bothers me because I don't like, I don't like all the negativity out of it. And, um. I'm here to just say that I hope that you guys would reconsider renewing her contract as the city manager. I don't, I don't see. Um, any, uh, negative stuff that I've been hearing. It's a lot of negative rumors and I, I don't agree with it. I don't like it. And, um, I know a lot of the people here also know who I am and I know that it could affect my business, but really I'm. I'm a person that will stand by what I believe in and, um, and that's just the way it is. And, uh. I don't see anything. I, I don't see no corruption in authority or power. I don't see none of that. And I, it really discourages me to see people saying that kind of stuff. So anyways, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Erin McClure. I would just like to say that in November, we completely swapped out the city council because the town. Wanted a change. So a lot of people voted you guys in because the town wanted the change. And I'd also like to say, you know, we. I hope if you guys don't renew con, if you do renew the contract. That we don't end up with the best project, the Danco project and minus one water tank. So there's a lot of things to think about here. Yeah, I'm glad I'm not in your shoes. Um. But careful what you vote for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Bartholomew, I've been a really like. Years. The president put out. It's pretty important to have an engaged, dynamic city manager that. Does not sit on empty. And that is very important, bringing about community. And many factors that. Thank you for all of your service.
Thank you. Anyone else? None. We'll move up to Zoom. Go ahead, Julie.
Yes, thank you. I needed that option. Yes, I'm in now. Um, I would like to comment on closed session number two. I'm just going to carry on my sentiments from the employee evaluation. Again. My opinions have always been really based on performance, not personal. I think there really is a conflict of interest when you join the two together. And I think it's important that we deliberate this, um, with them separated. I do have a clarifying question. However, if you guys make any decision or action. Will you be reporting back after closed session? And if so, are we able to be put on hold again on Zoom? That's it. Thank you.
Hello? Hi, my name's Vanessa Graham. I want to say first off, one thing I've noticed tonight, listening to all the comments about. Renewing Mandy's contract is that they seem to be very emotionally driven. Whether it's personal, from a personal experience, a personal thought. Her, um, thoughts on the direction the town should go and things like that. And that's really not what a city manager is about. Um. I'm not necessarily in support of Mandy's contract, nor am I against it. I am for the city of Blue Lake and what is best for the city. I feel like a city manager needs to be able to present themselves professionally. Um, in all aspects during all interactions. I have personally seen a few interactions with Mandy. Um, some in the public that weren't necessarily professional and that. Kind of made me feel. Not necessarily proud to say that's my city manager, but on the flip side of that, I have seen amazing things from Mandy. Um, you know, from volunteering with the fire department, um, to always trying to be helpful in any capacity that she can be. Um, I have heard her personally say one comment that I kind of feel like. Is looking at the job the wrong way and that's you have to have a tough skin. Where I feel like, um, we all are going to have people that don't like our thoughts and opinions and that's fine. But as a city manager, that person needs to be able to be validating of all community members. Whether or not they agree with her thoughts or opinions or, um. Direction that she wants to go for the city. Um, she needs to be able to hold a professional conversation, even if they might not agree. Um, and I know that this battery facility plant has created a lot of, um, people to dislike her, not necessarily for the job that she's doing. But for the direction she wants to go or that she feels is best for the city. And I actually admire that about her. She is passionate. Um, and she does have a lot of heart. But if you can't present that passion and that heart in a professional manner, then it's not always in the best interest of the city. So while I feel she has a lot of qualities that could make her a good candidate for renewal. I think maybe, um, just a little more direction at realizing not every, um, criticism given is meant to. Hurt her or be a dagger at her. Maybe it's just kind of guiding her to say, hey, you know, the last. Decade that you've been with us, you've kind of hardened your skin a little bit. We don't feel as validated. We don't feel as welcome. Um, just so that she can kind of see that, um. Everybody wants to be part of the community and, um, I really want our city manager to be welcoming no matter which side of the board that we're on. So that's kind of where I stand on it. I'm not for her or against her. I just really want some unity, some openness and, um. To, to be, our city to be presented in a professional welcoming manner.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Becky, go ahead.
All right. Am I in now? Okay. All right. Um, so actually I want to agree with what Juliana said and, um, Vanessa hit. Everything really well. Um, I'm going to agree with everything she has just brought forward. Um, please consider going into the contract, you know, um. Everything that we have brought forward, it has not been, you know, rumors or anything like that. Like Juliana said, we, we work hard at the things that we try to find and it's not. Because we're trying to be mean. It's not with hate or anger. It's just with the truth. And so when we do that and we get called out for it, just remember, we're, we're just doing. A little research here too, just like everybody else. But, um, please take a lot of that into consideration and, um. We are counting on you. You are a good counsel and we want to see good from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Anyone else on Zoom? Uh, Angela, go ahead.
Oh, hi guys. Um, thank you so much for, uh, taking my call. I just want to say. How refreshing it is, um, to sit in meetings now. And, um, gosh, you guys are hearing us. I can tell just by your response to, I, I can watch you listening to us and I love that. Um, thank you for, um, separating the job of the city clerk from the manager and. I know that you are all doing your research and I just want to thank you. Your efforts are appreciated. That's all.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else, um, uh, comments for closed session items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and. The council for, for into closed session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 It passes unanimously. Thank you. Welcome back if you're still there. We have just come out of closed session to report out. I'll go ahead and hand it off to Mr. Plots.
Yeah, thank you. Um, no reportable action was taken on item three conference with real property negotiators. Uh, no reportable action was taken with respect to the performance evaluation. Uh, with respect to the labor negotiations, the council voted unanimously on a five oh basis. To approve a first amendment to the city manager's employment agreement. Um, the material terms of which I will describe, um, under the first, um, item of this open session. As well as ask the council to ratify that vote in open session as required by the government code.
Great. So. We need, all those in favor of approving the.
Yeah. That, so that was just the report out. We now need to call the item and then I'll go through the material terms.
Thank you very much. Um. Can we get a motion to consider the approval of the first amendment to the city manager's agreement?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
I just need to go through the terms.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, got it.
Um, so the first amendment to city manager employment agreement, um, has the following material terms. Um, the parties, the council and the city manager. Um, have agreed to extend the term of the existing agreement, which expires on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The extended term would commence on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And run through and including February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six. Um, unless sooner terminated in accordance with the amendment. During the extended term, the city manager's salary will increase to ninety thousand dollars per year. Payable in the normal payroll, uh, practices of the city. Um, there are some additional termination provisions that are built into this first amendment. That extend beyond what's in the existing agreement. Uh, first, there is a mutual right of termination on or before July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Um, this can be done without cause by providing notice of the election to terminate. Um, to the other party on or before July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. In the event that notice is given, um, the notice, the termination date would be effective ninety days after. Um, the notice is given. So in other words, it's a ninety-day notice of election to terminate. Which can be given with or without cause by either party on or before July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Um. After July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, either party may, um, terminate without cause and without advance notice. Um, the city manager retains, um, the ability to terminate the agreement. Um, with ninety days notice prior to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five and without notice after August first, twenty twenty-five. Um. The agreement specifies that, um. In the event of resignation, um. After, um, or in the event that the city council elects to terminate. Prior to July thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. The severance that is otherwise provided in the municipal code will not be available. If the city council decides to terminate after, on or after August first, twenty twenty-five. Then the severance that's built into the existing ordinance is available to the city manager. The agreement also, um, specifies that performance evaluations will be done twice a year. Um, the first will occur during the months of February and or March. And the second performance evaluation will occur during the months of July and or August. As part of the evaluation, um. The city council will use goals, priorities and objectives established pursuant to section eleven of the original agreement. And additional criteria as may be determined by the council. Um, the city manager will also be asked to prepare a written self-evaluation. Of goals and objectives as well as any additional criteria that the council, um, elects. And that the city council will provide the manager with a written summary of the performance evaluation as soon as practical. After the conclusion of the evaluation. And the amendment also has other standard terms and conditions. Um, that are not considered material. The, once the, uh, amendment is signed, it will be publicly available as a public record available for inspection. With that, I'll turn it back to you.
Great. All right, we need to go ahead and open it up for discussion amongst the council or public comment. We'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone on Zoom wish to comment on this matter and or anyone in the public? Julie, go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody for their time for deliberation and. Um, your motion sounds appropriate at the time being and we look forward to the updates. And further sessions of deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment from Zoom? None, we'll go ahead and bring it back to council for approval. All right, can we get a motion to?
Motion to the, uh, motion to approve the city manager's contract as described.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously. All right. Um, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 All those opposed, hearing none, it passes.